will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is the Harwich Planning Board for Thursday the 17th of December 2020 at 6:30. This meeting is being held via remote participation only. Access is available through go to meeting.com and live broadcast on channel 18. You can join from your tablet or smartphone at global.gotomeeting.com/join/498931357. But also dial in using your phone at 408-650-3123. And the access code is the same, 498-931-357. So, uh, the order is pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, uh, general law, chapter 38, section 20. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. Like to do a quick roll call, uh, vote of the members present. Duncan Berry here, Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick here.
David Harris.
David Harris here.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland here.
Mary Maslowsky is not here. Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson here.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse here.
Bill Stoltz. Looks like Bill is not here. So, uh, the interim town planner suggested that we hop to the, um, items that are seeking continuance or requesting continuance immediately, which are items C and D. Uh, Charlene, did you want me to reopen these, read them, and then close them?
You do need to reopen them. All you need to say is the title, so PB 2020 dash 26 Royal Apartments LLC and PB 2020 27, uh, Next Grid Inc. You don't need to read the whole thing because you've already read those into the record, but you may need to open both of those hearings.
So, this is to open PB 2020 dash 26 Royal Apartments LLC as owner. Uh, the property we discussed previously and the hearing was continued from November 19th. Uh, the applicant has requested a continuance through January 12th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Move to continue. Move to continue 2020 26, uh, to January 12th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
No earlier than 6:30.
Right, no earlier than 6:30 at 6:30.
Second.
I agree.
Second with Mr. Chadwick. So, uh, motion to continue. Roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
So we have continued. So, item number PB 2020 dash 27, Next Grid Inc. Uh, also had a hearing that was continued from the 19th of November and has requested a continuance to the 12th of January 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved. No earlier than 6:30 PM.
No earlier than 6:30 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Uh, roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we now move on to, uh, item A, PB 2020 dash 30. Starlight 4 LLP owners William D. Kroll Esquire representative seeks approval of a use special permit with waivers for residential accessory structure with bedrooms. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, sections 325 dash 09 and dash 51. Property is located in 14 Woodland Road, map 14, parcel X 2 dash 2 in the R dash L zoning district. Mr. Kroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Kroll from Harwich Port, uh, this evening representing Starlight 4 LLP, um, which is really, uh, a family from Colorado with a number of children, um, that need bedrooms. So, I also have here with me tonight Dale Nicola, um, from Longport Construction. It would be doing the building, uh, portion of this. The petitioner has an existing garage, um, that Mr. Nicola, um, constructed in 2013, um, a garage with two bedrooms above. So that's already in existence. Um, and then in the interim, the town adopted this bylaw for a detached accessory residential dwelling, uh, structure, sorry, with bedrooms. And the building commissioner saw fit to say that he wanted to refer this for a special permit to the planning board. So that's why we're here this evening. What the petitioner seeks to do is, uh, to take the existing garage, uh, space on the first floor and convert that to habitable space. And then, as you can see from the plans we submitted, uh, the dark portion, uh, that's the new addition. That, that would be new garage space on the first floor. And on the second floor above, it would be two more bedrooms. So we basically, um, would have, uh, let's call it a carriage house with four bedrooms. Um, and still a two-car garage on the first floor where you enter in from driveway. So that's what they're seeking to do. The new structure would, um, still meet all of the setback requirements. Would also be well under, um, building coverage and site coverage requirements. And the petitioners would contend that the new structure would not adversely affect the neighborhood. It's an appropriate location and site for this use, not create any nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. An adequate and appropriate facilities are provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And our argument also would be it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. There would be no substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, orders congestion, or the like. And we'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. I think we should be listening to the interim town, uh, planner.
Uh, yes, good evening and thank you. Uh, the Health Department has no issues or concerns with the proposal as shown. They do note that if the planning board approves the plan, then the new septic system must be installed prior to a certificate of occupancy issuance. Uh, fire, police had no issues, DPW had no concern. Uh, when I provided you with this, uh, staff report, the town engineer had not weighed in. Uh, he and I spoke verbally and he has no concerns. Uh, as far as myself, I have no issues or concerns with the application as submitted. Um, I do recommend the following conditions. The first is the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to section 325 dash 2, word uses and definition. And that would be the definition of dwelling, single-family with an accessory apartment, as there is no kitchen. Um, the second is all border health requirements shall be met, including that a new septic system must be installed prior to a certificate of occupancy issuance. See, uh, the third, there shall be no rental or letting of these bedrooms. The next is any changes of the use or changes to the plan may be subject to further planning board review. And lastly, that the, um, special permit be recorded at the registry of deeds. And that is all I have.
Very good. Any, uh, comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
David.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Attorney Kroll, I do have a question. You knew that I would. Um, I think you mentioned you going, the existing structure has two parking spaces and that's going to be made into habitable space. And the new addition is going to have two, uh, garage spaces. And I'm asking for clarification on that because I see only one, um, car-sized garage door on the proposed right elevation. I'm looking at eight dot four. And it looks like the, the barn doors were on the back of the current garage structure are going to be moved, saved and moved over to there. And I'm just wondering, are we going from two garage spaces to one? And if so, is there going to be enough room, um, for the driveway and setbacks and so, so forth? If additional cars are going to have to be outside rather than inside the garage?
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Mr. Nicola on that one. I may, uh, he, he drew up the plans and I may have misread the plan as far as the two, two-car garage. So I'll defer to Dale on that.
Sure, so, uh, we are going to a one-car garage. So as noted on the plan, there is just a one-car garage and we are taking those double-barn doors and moving them next to the garage door so that they can have some boat storage.
Oh, boat storage. And, and the existing turnaround and, um, new driveway, if you will, placement will allow for additional cars if needed?
Yes, and that's all noted on the site plan. That's also a part of the septic plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Did I hear, uh, uh, Mr. McFarland?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, not maybe that, that anybody cares, but, um, this is exactly the setup that I have at my home, except that, um, I have, I have a two-car garage, uh, rather than a one-car garage. But, uh, the addition and the second floor and all the rest of it, uh, is what I, I put onto my home.
And we approved it?
As a matter of fact, a prior board did approve.
I can't, I can't wait to see it, Joe.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome to come and take a look at it.
Are you going to serve refreshments?
No, no.
Do we have any other comments from the board or questions for Mr. Nicola and Mr. Kroll?
This is Dave Harris. I have a, you know, kind of a comment in the packet. There was a loose drawing called AO1, which, uh, appears to be kind of a site plan. And, and it shows the driveway serving the new garage in the wrong location. There's also a, a, a drawing that says, referred, is referred to as the Wong, W O N G residence, which shows it properly. So it's just, it's just a little confusing. I don't know if everybody has the same documents I do.
That's the name of the family, W O N G.
And if, and if I might, uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, um, the stamped site plan, which is the site and sewage disposal plan prepared by J M O'Reilly, is the official plan because it is the stamped plan. And I do believe that is the correct plan.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure you're right, Charlene, but I'm just, I was just curious that this other site plan was in the packet. You may not have it because you don't have all the documents with you, but, uh, I just wondered, uh, if, if there's something of, of importance on the, on the drawing AO dot one that is relevant to our, our action.
Right.
If I, if I could just comment on that. So, so what, what we did is, um, before we had the site plan done, we did that site plan as part of the architectural plans, just so that we were sure that everything would meet the zoning requirements in terms of setbacks and, and site coverage. So that, that was done as part of the plan package prior to John O'Reilly doing his, uh, stamped, uh, site and septic plan.
Okay.
Sorry for that confusion.
No problem. Thank you.
Amazingly confused. All I have to do is throw up a rung, strange drawings, and it confuses me.
It sounds like we got somebody, some music going. Uh, is there anybody else on the board that would like to ask a question or make a comment? Perhaps we should, uh, make a motion to close the hearing?
Do you want to see if there's any public comment?
Oh, yes, public comment, excuse me.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Can you hear me? My name's Doug Grant. I'm in the butter.
Yes, hello, Mr. Grant. Thank you. Uh, your address, please?
26 Bayview Road. So, we bought the property just to the east. Um, basically have no problems with it, but as Commissioner Harris mentioned, there were two different site plans that significantly showed different driveway patterns there. Um, and also that a lot of the structures that proposed, that's no longer proposed. It's been completed. The pool is done. Um, it doesn't show the existing driveway, whether that stays or removed, um, or whether the existing garage is within the house is remaining or whether that's being removed. And I guess I'd also like to inquire as to when they plan to do this construction.
Mr. Kroll?
Go ahead, Dale.
Uh, yeah, so the, the pool was installed, I don't know, probably, uh, they, they completed that probably about two and a half or three months ago. Uh, you own a contract to put that directly. There's no, there's no part of the existing garage yet is being demolished. So all we're doing is, um, remodeling the existing structure and adding on to the right-hand side of it.
So the, the, I guess when I say existing structure, I mean the main house, um, that did have a garage on it. Um, will there be a driveway going to that? Because that's not shown on the site plan.
No, that, that garage was removed back when we did remodel in 2010, 2012.
So with eight bedrooms, there's only going to be one parking space?
There's six bedrooms.
Four in the gar, four in the garage and I assume there's four in the house?
Uh, there are, there are one, two, I think three in the house, actually.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I guess my point being is that there's a large number of bedrooms and only one parking space.
There's two parking spaces in the garage.
There's no requirement of actual parking spaces for a house. I mean, you can park on your lawn. You don't have to have a parking area designated. Um, so it's, it's whatever works for the people that live there, basically. We do have to provide a space for the, um, as Mr. Nicola indicated, um, for the addition. And we have one-car garage.
Plus, plus it appears, it's Joe McFarland. It appears to me that there's room in front of that garage to park at, at least two cars.
There is. There's actually room in front of the garage and there's actually room on the left-hand side of the garage. They, they carry that area for, for parking as well.
Does that address your questions, Mr. Grant?
Well, will the existing driveway be removed?
The existing driveway is going to be altered.
There's a large turnaround right now in front of the house that's not shown on the drawings.
Mm-hmm. As, as, as Attorney Kroll indicated, there's, there's no requirement for residential use to have parking. But there is, there is in the town of Harwich, they do, they do look at the driveway as being part of the site coverage. So in order to meet the site coverage requirements, we have to reduce the size of the driveway.
Okay. As I said, I basically have no problems with this, but I don't think the plans reflect what's there or what you're planning on doing.
Well, they, well, the, the site plan you're looking at, as I indicated earlier, doesn't. But the official stamped site plan that was done by John O'Reilly does.
That was submitted with the petition.
Mm-hmm.
That's the AO point one.
Good.
Actually, no, it's not. That's the site and sewage disposal plan. Don't get them mixed up, Mr. Kroll.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So I'll go to the other one.
I guess just my last question is, do you know when construction is planned to occur?
Our, our goal is, um, as soon as we can, uh, providing we get approval tonight, we'll, we'll have the 30-day appeal period and then, uh, uh, probably going to take, uh, I don't know, at least a month or so probably to get the permit.
We only have a 20-day appeal period?
Twenty, 20 working days, right? So.
Oh, 20 days.
Twenty days. About two to two and a half months to start construction.
So you expect it to be substantially complete by summer?
Yes.
That'd be great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question.
Any other questions from the public? I think we're good. Shall we close this off? I think I'll need a motion for that.
Make a motion, we close the public here.
Second. David Harris, second.
Very good. Uh, roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland. Oh, I think you're on mute, baby. I don't know. Uh, Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
I think we lost Joe.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Okay. Uh, oh, what's the, will, the wish of the, the board? We have, uh, it's like, um, a couple of votes we have to take here tonight?
Um, just for the record, because we did lose Joe, the decision would need to be unanimous.
Okay.
I could, I could do, you want me to go, Duncan?
That would be great, Alan.
Uh, make a motion to waive any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll a vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Thank you. Uh, and now do we have a vote on findings of fact?
Motion to adopt the fol, following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the RL zoning district. Two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the site is an appropriate location for such use for the accessory, accessory structures, so not contain a stove and therefore it's not a kitchen and is not accessory apartment as defined in section 325 dash 2, word usage and definitions, dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment. And five, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code. And as such, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
I don't see Joe back, um.
No, no, I just, I just got back on. I got screwed up with my phone there. I'm back and, and I'm an aye.
Thank you, Joe. Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Thank you. Uh, now we have a vote on the special permit?
Yep. Uh, move to approve with the conditions and waivers, the use special permit for PB 2020 dash 30, Starlight 4 LLP, for a residential accessory structure with two additional bedrooms pursuant to the code of Town of Harwich, section 325s, sections 325 dash 9 and dash 51, for property located at 14 Woodland Road, map 14, parcel X 2 dash 2 in the RL zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of Town of Harwich with the above findings and following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to section 325 dash 2, word usage and definitions, dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment and should not contain a kitchen. Two, all border health requirements shall be met, including that new septic system must be installed prior to certificate of occupancy issuance. Three, there's be no, there shall be no rental or letting of these bedrooms. Four, any changes of the use or changes to the plan may, may be subject to the further planning board review. And five, special permit decisions shall be recorded at the registry of deeds.
David Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Thank you, people. Uh, I think that clears that away. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Nicola.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the confusion, town planner, about the plan. I saw the stamp on it and I knew as soon as it came out of my mouth, I said, uh-oh, that was a mistake.
That's what I'm here to keep you honest.
Have good holidays.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant. Uh, now we also have a public hearing on, um, PB 2020 dash 31, which is 711 Main Street LLC, Salmo Patel Manager seeks approval to modify site plan review special permit PB 2019 dash 18 to reduce the number of existing parking spaces by one to accommodate the installation of an enclosed mechanical energy appliance, uh, generator at the rear of the building. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, section 325 dash 55. The property is located at 711 Main Street, map 41, parcel D8 on the C dash B and Harwich Center overlay zoning districts. Um, we have an indication that this applicant has requested a continuance to our very popular and best by popular demand, January 12th meeting of for taking seating arrangements and probably going to have food delivered for a stem-winding, seven-hour, uh, confap. Do I have a motion to, uh, for continuance?
Move to continue, Joe McFarland.
No later than 6:30, no earlier than 6:30.
On January 12th, 2021.
Alan Peterson, second. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Roll call vote Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland.
Joe McFarland, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Thank you. Uh, that squares where our public hearings for the evening. Uh, for new, uh, for the public meeting, we have, uh, new business, uh, the minutes from December 1st, which, uh, included in the packet.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Craig, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a vote. Uh, Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris.
David Harris, I'm staying.
Joe McFarland.
Aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse.
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Okay. And looks like we have a request for town snow plowing on Bastam Hollow. PB 2018 dash PB 2018 dash 13 and PB 2020 dash 12 Eastward MBT LLC. Who are we going to hear from about this?
Susan Ledoux is on. Yep. Can you see me and hear me?
There you are.
Okay, hi. Good evening. Yeah, I, I submitted a letter and I'm just gonna briefly go over the points I made in the letter. And we were here, uh, with this request last year. I believe Bill Marsh attended the meeting last year requesting this. And so in the last year, uh, it's a similar request to last year, but in the last year, the planning board removed all the lots from the covenant. That was in July, uh, and you're holding security in, in the amount of $13,598 to the completion of just, uh, a portion of the sidewalk and then the final asphalt plan. And we are installing the sections of the sidewalk as we build the houses on each lot and complete the associated site work for each house. The road construction has been complete for the last year and the road is in excellent condition. Therefore, there are no issues with the road surface. Three homes on Bascom Hollow have been completed and they're all occupied on a year-round basis. And two new homes are under construction and they are custom homes, uh, they're not built at homes. And, uh, my last point, uh, there are lots of vehicles in and out of the neighborhood, um, ours, construction vehicles, delivery trucks and residents. And so we, we were trying to appeal to the board in the town again tonight to just to see if, uh, you would, uh, take this street on and add it to your snowplow list.
Thank you, Ms. Ledoux.
Thank you.
Comments from the boards?
I'm physically driven up there. I, I'd have no problem make a motion to add it to the snowplow.
Here from the town planner.
Okay. Sorry.
Here from the town planner.
Town planner?
So the town engineer, Griffin Rider, and I, uh, reviewed and discussed this request. And at this time and based on the requirements of section 400 dash 14R of the subdivision rules and regulations, we cannot support this request. Um, section 400 dash 14R states that roadway maintenance, if released from restrictions with regard to sale of lots, um, or buildings in a lot by opposing performance or other security, the applicant shall maintain, um, the roadway for vehicular traffic. I won't go on. But because there is still a, um, performance guarantee on this, uh, road, uh, based on the rules and regulations, um, it is a responsibility of the, um, owner applicant to maintain, excuse me, maintain that until such time as they are, um, there is no, uh, bond held any longer. So we cannot recommend, um, approval of this.
So basically, where we were last year, right?
I'm sorry?
Basically where we were on this last year, as I recall.
Last year it was lots being held under covenant. This year, there's a performance, um, guarantee that is being held by the planning board.
Got you.
And how much is it, please, Charlene?
Uh, it's $13,000 and change.
And, and are we the only ones that can release that?
You are the only ones who can release that once the work is completed, which it has not happened.
And what, I'm sorry to bother you, but, uh, what needs to be completed?
They need to finish the sidewalks and what else, Susan? I'm sorry.
And, and actually, it would be just revised, the Asbille plan to show the portion of the sidewalk that remains.
Mr. Chairman, a question?
Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you. Um, we, um, how close are the two, I think you said, Susan, two houses construction in the last two lots? Was that, did I hear that right?
Yeah, yes. Wait, there are two houses under construction now, so the sidewalk will be completed with the completion of the site work for those homes. And then we'll have one, two, two lots, uh, that have not been sold yet or, you know, built on. So that portion of the sidewalk will not be built until those are sold.
So there's a total of four lots and/or houses currently, um, without sidewalks. Correct?
Um, well, three are lived in and two are under construction, so I would say five. Or, I, I see what you're saying, without sidewalk. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Questions? We have a motion?
I, I don't think I can make a motion. Uh, I, I don't think we can do this from what I hear.
That's exactly.
Based on the rules and regulations, no.
Yeah, I thought so, no.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. If, uh, if my wording needs to be corrected, um.
You can do a positive motion and then if the board chooses not to, um, adopt that motion, then you'd vote no.
Right. Okay. I think so. Uh, I, I, my motion was going to be, um, to deny the request from the applicant based on the, um, rules and regulations of section 400 dash 14R as, um, spelled out by the town planner and discuss.
Is that acceptable, Charlie?
That's fine. And if the board, it needs a second and if the board agrees.
I'll second it.
Then you would vote in the affirmative.
So are we approving the denial?
You're, you're voting on the motion. So if you, if you support the motion that was made, then you would vote yes. I know it's confusing.
Is that, are we okay with that wording?
Yep.
Right, go ahead. Okay, so Duncan Berry, aye. Mr. Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
I'm not sure I understood the motion. I thought the motion was to approve the request.
No, he didn't. He, his motion was to deny it, which is an acceptable motion.
Uh, David Harris, aye.
Okay. Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur's not eligible.
Oh, Arthur's not eligible. All right, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I must've missed that line here. Sorry about that, folks.
No, I forgot to put it in.
Okay. All right, um, so I'm sorry about that, but looks like we're, our hands are tied, um.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Yes, bye. Bye, Susan. Bye.
The 2020 annual report? Oh. What do we have with regard to our 2020 annual report? Uh, through that, is this kind of a, a summation of, uh, what we have to, that we make to the, uh, board of selectmen, essentially?
Um, it would be what's printed in the annual town report. And also the presentation you'd make to the selectmen, which is sometime in February.
Charlene, don't we ordinarily do this, uh, do this motion at the town meeting?
No.
Okay, all right.
So it looks as though we have some flexible numbers that will, as you say, uh, may change because the planning deadline isn't until next week, right?
Right.
So can we do a provisional vote on this or should we circle back in January or?
You can circle back in January. It's usually with, with the whole COVID thing, everything has been pushed. Usually you have your, uh, annual meeting with the selectmen in like October or November. Um, those have all been pushed to next, early next year. Um, usually the, the actual written reports are due for the annual, excuse me, report, um, the first week in January. I think those are gonna be pushed on, so you do have some time.
Okay.
So you don't need to take any action this evening if you don't want to.
Okay, I was gonna say, I think we can probably make this, uh, and it looks, this is gonna be the last meeting of the calendar year. And is the 12th the first meeting of the, of next calendar year?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And did we have a, um, calendar or board schedule for 2021 available?
You all approved that on the, either the end of October or beginning of.
A while ago, yeah, yeah.
I didn't put it in my usual file, uh, online filing, so I don't have it. Is the 12th our first meeting here?
It is.
Okay, so we can hold this off until the second meeting?
Yes. And if you need, um, a copy of the schedule for next year, it is on the town website under the planning board.
Okay. Um, the next item is the West Harwich DC PC, um, the guidelines. Um, if you'd like, I can give you a, a summary of where we're going with that. We had a meeting with, uh, Charlene and three, two members of the Cape Cod Commission. Three numbers. We've got, and we've actually had two meetings. And, um, this is all to set up the design guidelines, which we're going to be as a, uh, we're gonna try and get this into the next, um, town meeting as a rider on the special district, so that there are design guidelines in place. The commission is working with us to develop some visuals and we're gonna have a very compact, uh, very compressed set of guidelines. Um, hopefully, you know, something that's visual and not too wordy is gonna be better than something that's wordy and not too visual. So we're in the process of getting that hammered out and I think we're gonna have, um, uh, before the end of this calendar year, we'll have, uh, kind of a brief for the commission about the kind of visuals we'd like to have. Am I missing anything, Charlene?
Nope, that was perfect. And, um, one of the things we did discuss is possibly having a, um, a work session with the board. That's not part of a regular meeting, so you can actually kind of dive into it and have a better conversation. If we try and put this on the agenda on the 12th, it'll, well, yeah, you don't wanna do that.
Very good. So do we have any other briefings? Uh, you know, I think we would have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McFarland.
Uh, Charlene, do we have any, any news or any suggestion as to your replacement?
Uh, no, sir.
So, I mean, have they even interviewed anybody or?
It hasn't been posted yet or advertised.
And, and, and who, who should we?
There are discussions going on, but they, it's government. It takes time.
Oh, I understand. But, uh, in the final analysis, the, the administrator makes that appointment, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chadwick?
Thank you. Uh, Joe, I think I, and other board members, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I uh, somewhere that the, um, interim town manager was going take into consideration not necessarily a straight replacement for the town planner as current job description is written, but looking at the, the whole of government, if you will, or and maybe decide to, um, put forward some possible changes. Do I have that?
There is a, there are discussions about changing ever so slightly the job description and possibly the title. To me, it's semantics, but it's something that needs to be negotiated with the union because it is a union position. And it's my understanding that that's where the conversation is right now, is, is with the union.
So you are in the union, Charlene?
Not anymore because I'm retired, but yeah.
Oh, I under- I understand that, but I mean, when you were in the job, you were in the union.
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
So nothing would be posted, no job posting would be created till such time as that particular item is resolved.
Oh, yeah, he's gotta, he's gotta resolve that with the union.
Yep.
That's, that's from an old union lawyer.
I was just gonna say that, Mr. McFarland. You would know better than anybody.
Yeah, yeah, I, I now understand. I did not understand the status. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, I wanna, uh, as we wind up this meeting, I wanna thank everybody for all their effort under these adverse circumstances. Certainly will be a memorable year when we go back and spend our evenings in 2025, reliving the, the ten heartwarming meetings, um, and play them for our friends and loved ones. But, uh, thank you all. I appreciate the effort on everybody's part, on behalf, uh, everybody's part. And, uh, I know I speak for, uh, I'm sure Mary, who's not here, and Bill. Um, I, special camaraderie and I look forward to, again, being back in the meeting room together with everybody up at the Griffin Room and doing this the way it should be done, face to face. But thanks, everybody, and, um, I hear a motion to adjourn? Remove.
Second.
We need our roll call?
Yes, you do.
Uh, Duncan Berry, aye. Craig Chadwick?
Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland?
Joe McFarland, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse? Thank you, Arthur. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening and a good, and see you next year.